Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to call the meeting no order. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This mic working? All right, what doesn't sound like you. But make a note, councilmember Stan Kudus is absent tonight. Everybody else is present. Old minutes, the regular meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2024 were provided for review. I need a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes of May 2nd, 2024 as presented. I have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Epstein.
Motion passed. Audience participation, is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda? Note takers. Presentations, Public Works Week Proclamation. Councilman Marcus Major will be reading it.
How about that? We'll bring it out here. We'll turn the mic on the side. Is that all right? All right. All right. National Public Works Week Proclamation. Public Works Professionals Focus on Infrastructure Facilities and Services That Are Vital Importance to Sustainable and Resilient Communities And To Public Health, High Quality of Life, and Well-Being of the People of Kansas. These infrastructure facilities and services could not be provided without dedicated efforts of public work professionals, engineers, managers, and employees at all levels of government and the private sector Who are responsible for rebuilding, improving, and protecting our nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, and solid waste systems, public buildings, and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. It is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders, and children in Lansing To gain knowledge and to maintain a progressive interest in understanding of the importance of public works And public works programs in their respective communities. This year, 2024, marks the 64th Annual National Public Works Week Sponsored by American Public Works Association, Be It Now. As such, the mayor of the city of Lansing, Kansas, does hereby proclaim Lansing's full support in designating May 19 to 25, 2024, as National Public Works Week And urges all citizens to join with representatives of the American Public Works Association And government agencies in activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute To our public works professionals, engineers, managers, and employees And to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our national health, safety, and quality of life. Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Number 64. 64.
Yes.
That has no tie to your age.
It may be my age, but would you like to say something?
Thank you.
You sure?
Share that with all of your team down there.
Certainly.
The team's got a party for that, isn't it?
Okay. Thank you, Marcus.
Yes, sir.
New business, Leavenworth County Humane Society. The city council heard presentation and proposal from the Leavenworth County Humane Society At the March 28th work session. Feedback was received to continue working on the contract to find a number that was feasible for all parties. Cost for all impound services between LCHS and Leavenworth Animal Control totaled approximately $21,000 in 2024. The fixed price for intake and impound shall be firm for the term of the contract And shall be $42,000 per year payable in 12 $3,500 monthly installments. Annual increase during the period of the contract shall not exceed the rate Of estimated population increase on the city or 5% per year, whichever is greater. Or lesser, I'm sorry. I should say lesser. So I need a motion to approve the contract with Leavenworth County Humane Society for $42,000 per year For the term of the contract for pet animal sheltering services.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yes.
Dan.
Tim, you said that some of the cost of the $42,000 is offset by the not hiring of an animal control. What is that budget for that animal control officer?
I'd have to double check. We would budget that position for, I think, 24, 28 hours a week. And that's, that's one of the reasons why we've struggled hiring it Because it's hard enough to find full-time employees and finding part-time is even more challenging. So I would, I would guess, you know, $20,000, $25,000 a year roughly with benefits.
Rest of my questions is for the humane society. You don't mind taking some questions?
Oh, I have a few things, sir.
Come on up, Crystal.
It's tie-dye Thursday at the humane society.
Well, in the proposed contract, paragraph 10 is talking about the pet animals, the feral cats and all that. I noticed that it was duplicated in paragraph 20. Can we eliminate one of those paragraphs? Any problems?
The city manager and I talked about that this afternoon.
Yep, can remove that.
In 6, paragraph 16 is talking about the 10-day quarantine period. And 17 had me concerned because what do we do extra that warrants an additional cost for a 10-day quarantine period?
It's the boarding. It's the length of boarding. And we have to handle those pets in a specific way. Only the staff is allowed to handle pets that are on a bite hold. So I have to, I can't let a volunteer handle them.
The second part of your question was about reimbursing for veterinary care. Is that right?
Right, because, I mean, if we're contracting and we're giving them $42,000 so they can have a set budget, It almost appears to me that we're paying twice for the same service.
Yeah, that specifically talks about veterinary care to save life. If an animal comes in and they're in that bad a shape, most veterinarians are going to recommend that we euthanize them anyway. And that's covered in the euthanasia cost. So we've never charged the city for a pet who's had additional veterinary care when they've come into us as a stray.
That's going to be my next, what is, what is the traditional?
Yeah, we've not, we've not had to do that.
That's just to cover extraordinary?
Yeah, and extraordinary circumstance. Like if we had someone that came, if you guys brought us someone that was debilitated Like from a seizure, then they might be rehabilitated and we, we could talk about the cost of that. But for the most part, if an animal comes in and they require immediate lifesaving care, A veterinarian is going to recommend we euthanize them anyway.
Traditionally, you're, you're a non-kills shelter.
Ah, but that doesn't mean we never end a life. If they're irretrievably ill or injured and suffering, and, and we confer with a veterinarian on that, Then we are more than happy to end their suffering. That's the only kind thing to do. Just like with pets who present a clear danger to public safety, I'm not going to adopt that out to the community. So if, if we can't moderate a behavior with medication or training And have a good level of confidence that that pet is going to be okay to live next door to your grandkids, I'm not going to put it out in the community.
And, Tim, on paragraph 24 is about the utility payments. I'd recommend that we just add while under contract. You know, so as long as we have contracts, that goes along with it.
Yeah.
Easy peasy.
Yep.
Okay. And the cost of increase in the, in the contract says, you know, the percent of increased population Or 5%, whichever is greater, isn't that, should that be not whichever is lesser?
Yeah, and I believe the mayor noted that.
Yeah, I just, I just heard you correct that.
You just heard him say that. Yeah. Yeah, we talked about that this afternoon.
And the last thing I think is in paragraph Roman numeral three, you talk about being able to cancel at 30 days. But in paragraph eight, you talk about 90 days. Which, which is, which is which?
We spoke about 30 days on the phone this afternoon.
We're good with 30 days. That gives us enough notice to take care of whatever business we have pending.
And one thing with, with a couple of typos that were in here, kind of like you had just pointed out, I think the original basis for this contract was with the county. And then it was with us for as-needed services. So this is kind of the third iteration of the same contract. So, you know, things might have gotten modified the first time, but not the second time. So that's, that's kind of why there were a couple of typos.
I'm sure Mr. Robinson will look at it once again. I am sure he will.
We don't need it looking like an interlocal agreement.
We're trying to keep it simple. Let's keep it clean. Any other questions, sir?
No, I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah, we got all your comments.
I got one comment.
Okay.
I'll tag on what Dan said, where it says that we aren't hiring an animal control officer, so that offsets the cost. But I don't agree with that entirely. Because if I call in a random dog running at large, we still have to send an officer out. Officers still have to round up that dog and take it to the LCHS. They don't come out and get the dog to replace what the animal control officer is doing. So it really doesn't 100% wash it out. I just wanted to make that point.
Well, many times what happens, if I may, many times what happens is the citizen will bring the animal to us. And then we call and get a case number from the police department Or, or an officer will come by when they're in the area and sign the animal in.
I'm not going to catch dogs though.
No, no, I'm not asking you to. I'm not asking you to. Marcus would, but I'm not asking you to. No, Lisa would do it.
Lisa would, yeah.
In fact, I think Lisa has done that before.
I don't have any voices. I have a comment or two. You guys do great work.
Thank you.
You really do. And I know you're stretched. There's two dogs that roam my neighborhood. But they're taken care of, they're fed, and they're, they walk into my garage. Somebody was like, well, why don't you call them in? I'm looking for not hurting anything. They really don't have room for them. Unless something changes, I mean, I called the guy's phone and phone number and name are on the tag. And I called him and his first time I called him, he said, he'll come home. And he did. So, but you, you, your staff and your volunteers really need to be committed on everything you do. And I think it's incumbent upon the city to support you as much as we can. Your service you provide is invaluable.
We're very fortunate to be here in the city of Lansing. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else in the county. The partnership has been tremendous. Our staff and volunteers are out of this world. And we truly are a tribe. We, we pull together and we get things done. One of the great things about this contract being first is we can go to Baser and we can go to the county And say, look, Lansing's doing their part. If you want to be part of this party, you need to pony up.
Amen.
Anybody else?
Thank you guys so much.
How many animals do we actually, does Lansing bring to your program?
Oh, I've got the numbers from last year.
26%?
Yeah, about 26%. I'd say maybe 80-ish a year. Yeah, because last year we did 230-some and I think Lansing was about 80. And that, and we, we also consider the 42 animals that went to Leavenworth last year that could have come to us. I, I had a contractor out this week to look at the potential expansion to our kennel area to add a third dog kennel room. And I'm waiting for the estimates to come back on that. We can apply for some grants to help get that done. But that would alleviate some of the crowding at the shelter. Our staff has been able to handle this number of animals so far and volunteers. So we wouldn't be adding any additional burden to them. We'd just be providing better housing to the dogs.
And Crystal, I think you take volunteers that are really good at building the additional structures Or maybe adding on to roofs to give shade and shelter. You'd still be willing to take some, some folks that do this for a living that have leftover this and leftover roof.
Oh, haven't you? Yes.
You'd love to have people come to the shelter and donate some of their time or their spare stuff to your shelter, right?
And we have to make sure it's up to code because it's a commercial property. So we, we need to make sure that the registered tradesmen are doing the work.
Right, registered, licensed.
Yeah. So, but yeah, we're happy to take materials or time or expertise.
To help give some shade and shelter.
Sure. Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else?
I appreciate the time it took to read through this.
Okay, thanks, Crystal. We have a motion and a second, I believe. So call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number four is Engineer Services Contract, Ida Gamble Street Sewer Relocation, City Project Number 2024-02. The city council was briefed at the April work session. This product will, this project will reroute sewers from the 43-year-old 21-inch interceptor To the new 36-inch interceptor that was installed as part of the Seven Mile Creek Action Plan. Staff has met with and negotiated the scope and fee of the design of the project And anticipates it will be bid in conjunction with the town center project scheduled for September 24. So I need a motion to approve the scope and fee from GBA for Design Services of City Project 2024-02 In the amount of $91,265, the base fee of $86,919, plus a contingency of 5%.
Go move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? For Tony.
Just clear, this is going to fix the smell problem that we had?
The smell's been remedied, but this will take care of it.
That area where? Anyone else? Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Item number five is Engineering Service Contract, Phase 1 Inflow and Infiltration Study, City Project 2024-03. Staff briefed the city council in April work session. This project will begin in the Old Town Center, or Town of Progress, south of the prison and east of K-7 Highway. Its sub-basin has shown to be one of the leakiest and should be addressed at first. So future studies will allow for some scope of work in other sub-basins over the next few years. Staff has met with, met with and negotiated a scope and fee for the design of this project. Funds are available in the 2024 Base Budget Line of Accounting and Collection System Maintenance. So I need a motion to approve the scope and fee from GBA For Professional Engineering Services of City Project 2024-03 In the amount of $132,253, with a base fee of $125,955, plus a contingency of 5%.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any questions for Tony on this one? Was it leakiest, an engineering term? Leakiest?
That's my term.
All right.
That's layman's terms.
But okay. We have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number six is Ordinance Number 1109, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, Section 4 dot 02, Table 4-1, General Development Standards. At the February work session, staff was tasked with reviewing the UDO To recommend revisions that would open up opportunity for development within the city. The first revision addresses Lansing's capacity for residential development. This revision to the UDO involves amending the allowable lot size within the R1 and R2 zoning districts. As a role, as a result of these changes, a minimum setback of the R1 and R2 districts Also adjusted to allow building envelopment, or envelope that would allow construction on these lots. So I need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1109 To amend the city of Lansing's Unified Development Ordinance, Section 4 dot 02, Table 4-1, General Development Standards.
So move.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Do I have any discussion?
Josh started today looking across the table at me first thing this morning, so I apologize for that. You kind of want to, like we did this morning, the changes in the lot size so that everybody has a clear idea what's going on here.
Yeah. So.
I mean, we've got a lot of paper thrown at us.
Yeah, so what, what, what we did was we're moving from a 10,000 square, square foot minimum lot To a 6,000 square foot minimum lot for your R1, which is your most prevalent zoning district in the city. Okay? And then we're also changing R2 to go from 6,000 to 4,000. And as a result of that, we also need to change the front and rear setback lines So that you can actually build on these properties, right? And so that's what we're, that's what we're proposing. It is to allow more development in R1 and R2 zonings than is currently allowed by code.
And to confirm, a developer could have larger lots.
Absolutely. Yeah, this is, this is minimum. If somebody wanted to come in with an acre-sized lot, they could if they wanted to. This is just a minimum and as we talked about at the visioning session, we want to work with more housing in the city. And this would allow the dirt of Lansing to be more profitable because you can put more lots on it. And so a, I hate, I hesitate to use this word, but a more dense, single-family subdivision Would pencil out better for developers. And so that's what we're, we're trying to do.
It's a long time coming, so.
It reduces the cost too.
Yes.
I mean, because it's, it's a less cost for the lot, it's a less cost to build, which helps the developers. And in the end, it helps, it helps the families because now we have a less expense. I mean, it's, it's good, 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 all the way around.
You think about it too, like that's, that's less road we have to maintain in 15 to 20 years. That's less water line Landell has to maintain, less sewer line. So yeah, it's, it's a good thing.
But I like the idea that they could always go bigger.
They can, yep. This allows a little bit more creativity.
They won't have to.
So just out of curiosity, does this apply just to only things moving forward from today? So if someone built something, I'm going to say like 10 years ago, and it's in a violation of our code And you, someone, our county enforcement office just happened to find it, and they said, oh, well, it says 20 here. I'm not in violation, but 10 years ago, it was 30.
Sure. This would allow, in those circumstances, and I'm sure that if you looked hard enough And had a surveyor's license and actually measured footprints, maybe you could probably find a house or two or three or 100. But yes, those would now, those would be, those would be allowed, or those would be conforming uses As opposed to non-conforming uses, so.
Okay. Well, you know, one of the things we hear a lot about is affordable housing, and hopefully this is a move in the right direction. So, and thanks for your time this morning.
You're very welcome. Anytime. My door's always open.
Do you think this will draw contractors to move?
I, I will not make promises I can't keep.
I'm not asking you to do that, but I'm just.
I, Tim and I sat in a, in a conversation this morning.
Yeah, I was just thinking about this.
With, with a.
Make it.
It, it, so here, here's what we learned. We learned that one of the largest builders in the Kansas City metro Is looking at, they, they have probably a couple thousand starts this year, or they will at the end of the year. They had a couple thousand starts last year. What they are looking for is 50 and 40-foot minimum widths, and they might even ask for something a little bit smaller. What we're doing here is going down to 50 and 40 in our R1 and R2. So that would be something that they would have to go and have a battle with the city council Or the planning commission in other jurisdictions. Here, it would be allowed by right. So they just walk in, they walk in with a plat, say, here's our plat, and we say, cool, meets our standards, let's move on.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But does it, does it more of a draw?
Yeah, I mean, he's giving you example of that. What he's saying is we've had actually somebody come in And when we mentioned that, they're interested.
Yeah, I was going to say not to.
So you've had somebody come in already?
We've had, we've had pretty good conversations with two different people who have never built in Lansing before But have built in like Southern Johnson County or Northern Miami County. And I know that was something we've talked about in the past, was having different people develop property. And that was one of the things that we got excited about. Yeah, like Josh had said, one of them was pretty specific about tighter lots, or I'm, I'm not sure how you word it, But lots that aren't quite as big as what you might normally see.
Great, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, we got a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey? Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number seven is Ordinance 110, Unified Development Ordinance Amendment, Section 4 dot 02, General Development Standards, Section 4 dot 3, Table 4 dash 2, Permitted Uses, Section 4 dot 03, Permitted Uses, and Section 4 dot 04, Accessory Use Standards. Staff proposed to amend the UDO to allow accessory dwelling units, also known as carriage houses or mother-in-law quarters, By right and remove the, well, familia, the familial restrictions, the family restrictions On the residence of the ADUs on residentially-zoned property. Basically means they can rent it to somebody other than family. Okay. ADUs will require a building permit and must meet all relevant building code rules. Additionally, the exterior of the ADU must be of a similar facade to the main structure. The planning commission voted 4-1 in favor of recommending the adoption of the proposed language. So I need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1,110 To amend the city of Lansing's UDO, permitted uses, and accessory use standards.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Besides discussion of my massacre of most of those words. I need another bottle of water. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number eight, Ordinance Number 1,111, UDO Amendment, Section 7 dot 03, Required Parking. Staff proposed to amend the UDO to remove the minimum parking requirements from Article 7 of the UDO. The planning commission voted 5-0 in favor of recommending the adoption of the revision. So I need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1,101 To amend the city of Lansing's Unified Development Ordinance, Required Parking.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
One question.
Yeah.
Does this apply both to residential and commercial?
It does.
And I noticed that, that the parking becomes parking guidelines instead of required parking?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So the minimum parking requirements, would they be similar to, what is that, Harbor Freight right now?
Um, so the Harbor Freight keeps getting brought up. They, they said that's, you know, It was, the parking requirements were a little bit high, it seemed like. I believe that they met them at the, at the end of the day. So this is, you know, just, it is allowing a developer to come in and a business to come in And kind of set the terms for the parking space that they, that they provide to their customers. So.
Yeah, so we're just not mandating.
Correct.
You have this many parks.
We let them.
We let them determine based on what we know.
Correct.
I think even beyond Harbor Freight, there's probably a couple other examples, like I think Philamon Dental or Family Eye Care Probably two other places where our parking rules required X number of spaces, But it's pretty rare when you see the parking lot completely full. So let, let the business owner and their engineering team figure it out.
That'll help with.
Go by Harbor Freight a lot, and I bet they'd love to have that north parking lot in the grass instead of concrete that never gets used.
And Mayor, what I was thinking and asking that, like KCKCC is they do their design. Now that's guidelines instead of required, they may be able to get away with a smaller parking lot Because they have such a transient population that they're going to be servicing.
Yeah, it's also better for us for runoff and everything else.
Oh, yeah. That's a good point.
Okay, anything else on this one?
Is there still a requirement for handicap versus?
Yeah, so that, that is federally mandated. We can't waive those rights or those, those requirements. So if you provide parking, you have to provide X amount of, I think it's, there's a table That I could share you if you, if you wanted.
I just want to make sure that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number nine is Ordinance Number 1,112, Amending the City. Item number nine is ordinance number 1,112, amending the city code Section 8-306. City code Section 8-306 establishes the procedures for notice of violations, abatement, immediate hazard. Currently, the code refers to KSA 60-303 Charlie, which specifically allows return receipt delivery, certified mail, to service, to serve notice of violations. The code enforcement division is currently limiting its ways of service and has proposed to expand the options available to be able to serve residents their notice of violations. Staff is proposing to amend Section 8-306 Alpha 4 to allow all methods allowed by KSA 60-303, including return receipt delivery and personal and resident service. So I need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1,112, and ordinance amending city code Section 8-306, authorizing personal services, personal services of notice of violations.
Go move.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Need to give Bill all the tools he can have. Yep, he's doing a good job, and if this will help him...
Oh, Bill.
We need to, we need to help him out however we can.
Yes. Okay. I have a motion and a second. Call and roll on this one.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Surprisingly, item number 10 is an ordinance, ordinance number 1,113, Mobile Food Vending Policy Manual. Ordinance number 1,113 adopts the Mobile Food Vending Policy Manual for the purpose of establishing fees, clarifying regulations and guidelines regarding mobile food vending. I need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1,113, Mobile Food Vending Policy Manual, and establish fees, regulations and guidelines regarding the mobile food vending in the city of Lansing, Kansas.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this one?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dan.
I apologize, didn't look at the update. You said it was up there, but in item 10, when I read through the manual, I wasn't sure exactly what a mobile food truck constituted until I got to the next item on our agenda, number 11, where it says that it was a food truck, mobile vehicle, trailer or car. Did we use the same terminology in both places?
We did. I took your wording and added that to the definitions.
I just, I just thought it'd be important that we're consistent, and it's easy to understand exactly what it applies to. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number 11, ordinance number 1,114, amending fee structure. Ordinance number 1,114 adopts the updated fee schedule for service charges and fees for various departments, including finance, business license, community and economic development, and parks and recreation. Need a motion to approve and adopt ordinance number 1,114, approval of fee schedule.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any question on the fee schedule?
Yes, I do.
Okay, Dan.
For our parks and recreation. At what point are we going to include pool? Have you started thinking about family passes, costs and all that?
Yeah, we actually, pardon me, we've been talking with our consultant about that, you know, helping us to gather some information about whether places charge in the metro. I know Tim pulled some stuff from Tongi and Bonner. So we do have some information we're putting together, so at some point in time, we'll have to come present to you guys and see what you want to do with it.
In what year are we going to start setting that? Is that gonna be a '25 type year, or are we looking at summer of '26?
I would say when we'll...
Yes, I'd say probably early 2025, we would establish that, yeah.
Okay, so do we have to have that be established now to have it set for '25?
We can do it in early...
We can amend, we can amend it.
Yeah, we can do that.
Should we put a footnote in there that's anticipated that the pool will be set prior to opening, or give something to citizens where they know that we're working on it?
Sure, we can do that. Yeah, we, I mean, we definitely have to have it in place, and, you know, once we want to, whenever we determine what the timeframe...
Yeah, I mean, we can put something out once we get the numbers. I wouldn't want us to put anything in there that we're not sure.
Let's hold off on that.
Yeah.
I mean...
Tish was saying, too, I think we're gonna be updating some fees again in the fall.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can update these. It doesn't have to be an annual, Dan.
Well, it's not annual?
No. I mean, we normally do it annually for the big schedule, but we can update it when we need to update it, based on what we have in the past.
But, yeah, we can, we can add those things in the fall. I mean, I don't know how much into the nitty-gritty we want to get about pool fees and stuff. I know, I remember some of them were like, there's a discount for people who live in the town versus people who don't. I think maybe half of them, for a family pass, was like $200, and some was slightly less than $200. So, but that's kind of the ballpark for a family pass from what we saw in the metro.
I'm really glad you guys are doing this so early on.
Yeah.
Well, the other thing is, we have to try and determine everything that we're going to offer, you know, and then figure out a fee that's appropriate for it.
Sure.
In advance. But we definitely want to have that on the table so that if we want to sell passes three months before the pool opens, we have the ability to do so. So, we'll get it done.
Thank you.
You bet.
Thanks, Jason.
You're welcome.
Anybody else on this one? All right, we have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number 12 is not an ordinance, it's a resolution. Resolution number B62024, a resolution of support. The city is submitting an application to the Kansas Department of Transportation for Transportation Alternative Program Funds for the Lansing Trail from 4-H Road to Lansing High School project. Need a motion to approve Resolution B62024, a resolution of support, to be submitted by the city administrator, Timothy Vandal, and authorized by the mayor to sign the necessary documents.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? If you haven't read the letters of support, the kids from the school, you gotta do it.
Say aye. Did we get a fair amount of...
Yeah, I was gonna mention a couple things on that. We got, or we received 18 letters from adults, but we received like 40 letters from children in fourth grade, so that was...
That's awesome.
Yeah, it was, it was amazing, so major props to the folks that... Yeah, I can show those to you guys after. They're very cute, actually, kind of warms your heart reading it, you know, because quite frankly, I mean, that is a challenging area for people to walk, and even the fourth graders can see that. So, so the letters of support were fabulous. But, yeah...
Do we know who the teacher was on that by chance?
Mrs. Holden and Miss Bosley, I think? Those two, in the fourth grade.
That's surprising.
Yep. The big thing about this resolution, just remember, even though we, this is a huge grant, and it might be $2.25 million, that still means our share is six, seven...
Five, six, seven...
Yes, our share is still pretty significant. So just keep that in mind. And also, since this is federal funds going down to the state, we do have to maintain it. So that's kind of the big thing.
But it sure helps, Tim. It would sure help.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Absolutely.
So it's a small price to pay for that much concrete and that much work.
Yeah.
Right? But I saw a lot of negative responses on, well, what about getting it from Mary all the way up to 4-H intersection, and 4-H intersection all the way to the high school? I didn't respond. I don't fall into that category because I'm not going down that road, even though people are trying to get you to respond to it.
Yeah.
But it's just real sad that our citizens don't understand how much work you and your staff go into this, and the, and the reach out to our school system to get parents and kids to start writing the letters, says a lot about you and your staff, Tim. It says a lot about what we're doing here in this city, and I'm really happy.
You know...
This is where we're headed, but we can't over-communicate enough that, yeah, we get it. We're trying to get from Mary to 4-H. We're trying to get from 4-H to the schools. This is one step.
Yeah.
Help us get this one step going, because we're talking in the millions of dollars to do sidewalks.
You hit the nail on the head, and if you guys remember that joint work session, this was one of the things we talked about with, with the school board, and so I thought this was kind of a cool thing, that, you know, they're supportive of the grant and we are. The other thing, too, that maybe got lost in the shuffle a little bit, because I saw some of those comments, too, and people were just throwing out random streets where we don't have sidewalks, and that's unfortunate. But a big part of that, this route is listed on the Mid-America Regional Council's Regional Bike Ways Plan. So there is this document in Kansas City, Missouri, that's hundreds of pages, and this route, this corridor, is listed on there as a future transportation route. So that's one of the reasons why this project fit more so than other projects in random neighborhoods that don't have sidewalks.
Well, that's what a lot of people don't know.
Yeah. I mean, when you go into one of these, you gotta align it to all kinds of other pieces and studies that have already been done.
Yes.
And that, like, I think it's like a race track, or one that you ride across Kansas and Missouri. This would be a path that links that. So, yeah...
Yes, there's, there's the Katy Trail, Trail, there's the Flint Hills Trail, there's all of these different trails, and that's the document that references this corridor.
Yeah, so when you submit these things, you gotta get some linkage to other things, you get some traction, otherwise, hey, I want money, I want to build a sidewalk.
Yeah, Marcus, it's hard not to respond, especially when you see some of the people, you know, that sat here, and really know what's going on and are dissident, so.
It'll be a good, it'll be a good thing.
You know, I would love, I would love for our city to, you know, have some more endowed families that have been left with so much of this and so much of that, that they could contribute towards the city to have so much sidewalk put in. I mean, I would love from along 4-H, all the way to Bernard Park, I would love for a wide sidewalk like you did from Ida all the way to Eisenhower. That's why, I'd love to have that all the way to Bernard Park. Can you imagine the amount of bicycling and the riding and the walking and all the way? And that's a good little, that's a good little go from the 4-H intersection to Bernard Park. That's...
You also have to remember, some people don't want sidewalks in the front yards.
Well, that is, that is front yards, that's farmland.
Well, I mean, that corner there, if it ever develops, right, I mean, we'll have a sidewalk that goes pretty darn close.
Oh, I know, because you gotta clean the sidewalk within so many hours of snow.
And you get...
Yeah, and, or the city will come out and give you a ticket, sell when you're selling a sidewalk.
All right, anybody else on this one?
Thank you, Tim.
Anyone else? Okay, we got a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
Motion passed. Item number 13 is executive session for economic development. Need a motion to go into executive session for preliminary discussions of economic development activities, KSA 7543-19, Bravo 4, for 15 minutes, beginning at 7:44 and ending at 7:59.
Go move.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
We are in open session.
Are we gonna speak? Could we lose our audience?
Yep.
We're live. Second motion, we're in open session.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to return to open session. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
No.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
And return to open session. Reports. So any department heads, they all left, don't blame them. City...
I just want to say...
Oh, you want something? Sorry.
Yeah, I just want to say, on behalf of my code enforcement officer, I know you guys are getting a lot of calls about grass and the rate at which it is growing. Give him, give us some grace as we're working through getting the grass taken care of in the city, so.
All right, you got a day. Thanks, Josh.
Yeah.
City attorney.
Another report, Mayor.
All right. City administrator, Tim, what do you got?
Our, our employee benefits broker received bids for our updated health insurance. That came back at 5.8% to stay with United Healthcare. So that's, that'll be the health insurance provider for the city for the next 12 months. We, we'd spoken a little bit earlier about discussions that we've had with folks who do single-family developments in town. And like we had talked about, and it, it really is quite a coincidence, but they did talk a lot about more dense lots, you know, closer setbacks, things like that. The other thing that came up a lot in these discussions is the RHID program. And without that program, investing millions of dollars doesn't really work. They can't make the projects pencil out. So I think that's going to be something that's going to be coming up again. One thing I remember we had spoken about at that work session was looking at the future land use map. And I've put a link to that in my report. If you guys want to look at that and say, hey, this parcel that we talked about last week, the future land use map says residential, the future land use map says XYZ. So you guys can kind of take a look at that. But I do think there's at least three or four different parcels in town where we're going to be getting requests about things pretty soon. So I think that's a good thing. So keep that in mind. Look at the future land use map. Any other questions with that RHID program, please let us know. Another thing, some of you guys who have been around here for a while might remember this. At one point, we spoke about doing some type of citizen satisfaction survey. We looked into doing that. Maybe it was right around the time I came here and it was not cost feasible at that point. I was at a conference talking to a company who does citizen satisfaction surveys and the person I was talking to, and she's from Lansing, so I thought that was kind of neat. And the amount was probably a quarter of what we were quoted seven or eight years ago. So it was a lot more reasonable than I thought it was going to be. So we did have a good discussion about the benefits of doing some type of citizen satisfaction survey. And so I, I did tell them it might be good to approach the council about that, to come to a future council meeting, to talk about the benefits of that, so it can kind of help us figure out what we're doing well, what we're not doing well, maybe where we want to spend our budget money at, things like that. So they might be coming to the June 6th meeting just to kind of talk to you guys about their company and the benefits of citizen satisfaction surveys. So. Again, big thanks to the folks who wrote letters of support for that trail grant. It's exciting. Fingers crossed that we're successful on that. And that's all I have.
Mayor, can we make sure we send that, those PDFs out to everybody so they can-
Oh, the kid letters?
Yeah, there's a few requests out there.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Tim. And we'll go around the horn, starting with Kevin.
Councilman Major touched on this earlier, but, and after talking with some of the council members and listening tonight, Tim, your staff does a excellent job of responding to emails, allowing extra time to answer our questions and in turn makes these meetings run a lot more efficient than, than they could. So I appreciate you and your staff for all of that.
Good, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Karen. Gene?
I got a couple of things. You know, I feel bad that it just come to my attention, but last Wednesday was Peace Officers Memorial Day and it's Police Week in the United States. And Steve and his crew do a good job. I know he struggles with getting help and keeping help, not unlike any other city. And while we have been blessed and very fortunate not to have lost anybody here, it's happening in Duane County and Johnson County. I mean, it, it does happen. And so, so I just want to say, Steve, appreciate your work and the work of your officers and I wish I'd have caught it earlier. Kind of seemed like a day late and a dollar short. So, anyway. And I have had the opportunity to talk to Lori Redford, who is, I believe, the Director of Independent Living at Twin Oaks about the survey, the microtransit survey. They are aware of it. They have issues with some of those folks and computers. And, and, and once you log on to a certain computer to do the survey, you can't do another one off that computer. So, and there is interest there. Carrie knows about some of this, but they've actually had residents of Twin Oaks give the pickup address of armed forces insurance across the street because then they're in Leavenworth.
They're crossing, now think about that. They're crossing Eisenhower Road. Well, that's safe to be doing at 75, 80, 85 years old.
So, and, and we're going to meet with them, with the Director of Activities. My question, concern or hope is that we can do something to accommodate those people.
We could print off paper copies.
Survey and get something set up. She was fairly confident that the interest, she knows it's there. And, and some of the residents have seen the OB right pull into the medical center and it, and it's right here and they're bringing them, but they, they can't get it. So, so there is a need and I, I would hope that we could, in the near future, do something to accommodate those people. When we get a paper survey or something, we'll, we'll get ahold of the Activities Director and get something set up and get, get them folks taken care of. This is, this is what this program's for. And we have to give them people a voice. We, we have to hear them. We're going to hear a lot of people who don't want it, who don't need it.
I mean, we could even set up a time where we bring the survey there.
Well, that's one of them, yeah.
And then just have them sit, sit around at-
Jean and I are talking about.
Sit around at a table and fill your survey out and take them back from it.
So if we could get something going on that, and once we know what we're gonna do and then we'll, we'll get in touch with them and, and set something up.
Word for.
And be sure that these people are heard.
Yep.
So, that's all I have.
All right. Thanks, Gene. Marcus?
Yeah, I just wanted, I want to thank my fellow councilmen on the staff for tonight with the Leavenworth County Humane Society and what we're doing and where we're going with that. That's a really good thing. Really good. And I want to thank Tim and his team and his staff and Mr. Gunter. You did a lot of work. There was a lot of issues in ordinance and more ordinance and more things that we reviewed tonight that are for a good reason and a good cause that we've updated. And so there's a lot of good work that goes into this. And I, I just can't thank the staff for what you do and how you're doing. And Chief Wayman, thanks so much for what you're doing. And our, and our, and our city lawyer for helping us with all this. And I know you're going to help us with some other stuff that we're working as well, that I look forward to working with you on as well because Tim and I have been working really hard on that and Dan Clemmons. So, that's for another date and time. Last thing I've got, Fourth of July celebration. Were we going to get a presentation on that? Or did I miss the presentation of what we're doing and how we're doing?
We can give you guys an update on how the planning is coming along.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We are set to use the high school.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah. So if we can see that layout-
Yeah.
You know, big festivities and food trucks and all kinds of stuff, that'd be a lot of fun.
Yeah.
All right, that's all I got. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thanks, Marcus. Jesse?
And ditto what everybody else has said. Thank you, Tim and your staff and just all of our city employees. Hardworking people that keep our city rolling. So, other than that, I got a list of 97 grass complaints. I'll go with those addresses one at a time.
One thing that's really clear to me since I've joined the board is that this, Tim and his people are very proactive. And there could be a lot more issues than we have to deal with, but because they're handling them so efficiently, even before it becomes an issue, it makes our job as council members a lot easier, a lot more easy. And I'm really impressed with, we have a work session and we talk about, hey, this is going to help our city grow. It's going to help our citizens pay less taxes. We take, we make an idea and then all of a sudden you come here and we're making that idea become truth. It's what we're doing in this city. And I know the people will appreciate it. And I had recently, one of my neighbors came to me and they said, man, if my taxes go up again, I don't know that I'm going to be able to continue to live in Lansing. I mean, it's just, the, the prices are going up so much and there are in retirement fixed incomes. And I know that this board in particular has done a great job of making sure that we don't increase taxes. And I know we'll try to continue to do that. There's going to be a time when that may not be possible. But I'm just so impressed with Tim and his staff and everything they do. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Pete, thanks. Dan, what do you got?
Only thing that's weighing on my mind other than what's already been said here, I could echo everything again, but the time's coming that we probably need to talk about the Fire Board in open session. And where we're going and what are the plans. I mean, what's High Prairie going to do? What are they not going to do? What's Delaware going to do? And what's the Leavenworth County Commissioner's stance on all of this? But maybe after the next meeting, we need to probably put it on the calendar for the open council session.
You know, and you, you recall too, you teed it up really well. I mean, we, we had spoken with Delaware about having some type of joint meeting, whether it's downstairs or wherever where citizens can come in and ask us questions. So that's something we could do at some point this summer. We're not positive about what High Prairie's game plan is at the moment. I think they've scheduled a work session with the county commissioners for next week. And so that's, you know, what they do is what they do and, you know, best of luck to them.
Where's that meeting at?
It's at the courthouse, so.
But they're not out. Let me just say, High Prairie's not out. High Prairie is seeking for answers, seeking some questions, and they're probably going to come back to Lansing. There's a lot of rumor mill about what High Prairie, you know, they want to do this or they, but, and there's emails flying. But those three-
What'd you say?
There's emails flying, there's rumors and hurt feelings or whatever. But those three elected officials that represent the entire community of High Prairie have to represent the entire community of High Prairie. And there's a lot of landowners and residents in High Prairie that want to ensure they have fire protection. And it is quality fire protection from Lansing that they know.
Marcus, are those, are those people-
I'm not sure we want to get into the Fire Board discussion, Dan, so.
Just saying, don't count them out, Dan. That's the reason why I coded it in my closeout that we're going to get into further discussion and you had to tee it up. So now you got me spun up.
This is like another-
Bottom line is, do you count High Prairie out? High Prairie is still at the table. Delaware is at the table.
We will put this on, on the future agenda.
Frank, the session. Oh, I got you.
That's everything, Mayor.
Future agenda. Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome, Mayor.
Appreciate it. Carrie, what do you got?
Thank you, Dan.
Well, it kind of stinks to be the last guy to talk.
Hard to top that.
So I will just say ditto to what everybody else has said and I move adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Call and roll.
Mr. Gardner?
Yes.
Mr. Kirby?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mr. Garvey?
Yes.
Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Mr. Clemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Brungard?
Yes.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.